I'd like to call the board to order. And we're filming tonight, so we'll be on film. Cameras are hidden up here. I don't know in the script. But we are filming tonight. The first on the agenda is to call NASDAQ. Up to the podium and describe his services. Excuse me. NASDAQ.
Do you want him to introduce himself?
Yeah, you introduce yourself to the board also.
This microphone is down. Is it down for a reason?
No. Not that I know of. Lift it up.
Making too much noise?
Yeah.
He'll let us know. He says it's okay.
It's okay? Everything's okay? Okay, good. You never know.
Why don't we start with introducing all the board?
Sure, I'd be delighted to hear.
Start with you, Jim.
Jim Catch. All right, how you doing?
How are you?
Anne Lee, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Anne Wright, hi.
Senator Barack Obama.
Jocelyn O'Quinn, nice to see you.
Megan Trumbull.
Nice to see you.
Thank you very much for inviting us. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to talk with you about your upcoming superintendent, upcoming superintendent search. My name is Art Betancourt. I'm the executive director of NASDAQ, the New England School Development Council. NASDAQ is located in Marlboro, Massachusetts. And in fact, you're familiar with us because we've done some work for you prior to this. I'm here with Dr. Ken DeBenedictus, who I will have, with your permission, have introduced himself in just a minute and go through some of the details of the search that, and answer some of the questions that you may have. What I'd like to do is just give you a very brief overview of the firm and what we do, and then turn it over to Ken, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair?
Fine.
Okay. We are a not-for-profit organization. We were formed at the Harvard Graduate School of Education in 1946. We're no longer affiliated with Harvard. We're now a standalone organization, and that's the way we want it. When we come into a district, we have no conflicts in terms of our memberships in other organizations or any allegiances to other organizations. Our only allegiance is to you, our clients. So we're a freestanding, nonprofit organization. And we do work in basically four areas. We do work in executive search, which is the reason I'm here speaking with you this evening. We also do a lot of planning work. We do strategic planning, facilities planning. We're very well-known for our demographic work and our enrollment projections. And we also do professional development. We have very strong presence in professional development. We're very proud of what we do in professional development because we really target virtually all of the constituencies within a school district. We work with boards and leadership teams. We work with teachers, and we also work with support staff. And we try very hard to meet the needs of all of those levels in a school district. So that in fact, all of those, all of those participants in the school district feel a part of the district and feel that they're, they're, they're being trained and given insights and knowledge that can be useful, useful for them, and ultimately useful for the district. We also do research and development. And we have a very strong presence, actually a national presence, in what we call team governance. And this is helping school boards, in your case, and leadership teams work together to create goals through planning. Ultimately, those goals benefiting the children in the school district. Just by way of introduction, I'm a former school superintendent, was a superintendent for over 20 years in Massachusetts. Prior to that, a building principal. And started my career, I won't tell you when, because it was a while ago, but started my career as a biology teacher in Newton, Massachusetts. Just some quick bullets about us that might be useful for you to know. We started doing searches in 1982. Since that time, we've done well over 450 executive searches throughout New England. We're a comprehensive service organization. In other words, we do more than just searches, as I just described. There's no single firm or organization that performs more services for New England school districts all over New England than we do. We actually do work in all of the New England states. We're not based in any single state. We are a New England-based firm, but we are also a nationally-recognized firm. Chances are, if you go most anywhere in the country and you mention our name, someone is going to know us or heard of us. And what we do is we use that national recognition to attract talent to New England in the case of searches. It helps us a great deal in recruiting. You'll find that Ken and I travel the country to various conferences doing recruiting. We'll both be down in Connecticut the end of this week. We'll be in New York come October, probably be in Houston come February. So part of what we do is we put ourselves out nationally to attract talent in New England and hopefully attract people like that to your applicant pool. However, we have a very strong regional presence as well. We have at least one search consultant dedicated to each of the New England states, which may, and most of your candidates are probably going to come from the, from the New England area. What that means is that our recruiting efforts are very effective throughout New England. And we're also very good at vetting candidates throughout New England because we can go right to our consultants in each of the states and ask them to research the candidates that we're looking at. We do not have a stable of candidates. In other words, we don't move a group of candidates from one search to another. If we were to work with you, if you were to engage us for services, we would suggest to you that we would develop with your help a candidate profile. And we would then try to attract candidates to your, to your district based on that profile, both through the typical outreach of advertising and that sort of thing, as well as recruiting. So we don't, we try very hard not to just move candidates from one, one search to another. Now, we can't prohibit candidates from moving from one search to another. Obviously, that, that does happen. But we try, we try really to develop a unique applicant pool for each of the clients that we work with. We actively recruit on a national basis, as I just mentioned, and recruiting is second to none. And in fact, there are some, there are some districts that engage us just to recruit, just to develop an applicant pool for them, so that they can, they can do the proper outreach for their searches. Lastly, we focus, try to focus on a good fit for the district. And that, that takes paying attention to what you folks tell us in terms of what you're looking for. It means paying attention to the applicant pool that you attract and trying to ensure that the applicant pool, or a major portion of that applicant pool, fits what you're looking for. It also means that if it doesn't work the first time, that we're there until it does. And in this kind of a climate, this kind of a candidate climate, I can tell you that attracting good candidates takes a lot of work. You're usually successful, but I'll be candid, sometimes the first time around, you may not be. And we're here for you throughout that process, regardless of how long it takes, in order that you get the candidate that's right for you. So we may attract 20, 25 candidates, and after all is said and done, you may come to us and say, you know what? Those just don't look like the right candidates for us. That's fine. Then we simply do it again, and we continue to work with you until, until you get the candidate that you're looking for. Just a couple of things about the proposal that I put in front of you, and I assume each of you got the packet in advance, okay. In that packet, you will note that there is, that represents a comprehensive search packet. Everything that you need is in that packet. There are other things that you can buy if you wish, or there are things that you can take out of that packet that you may not want. So that represents sort of a framework for, for discussion. But in that packet is everything, including an advertising package, which is there for the price that we've quoted at no additional cost. We suggest an electronic or web-based advertising program. However, if you wanted to do hard copy in some, either local or even national publications, we could do that. But the advertising that you'll see there is in Education Top Jobs, for example, which is the, the web-based version of Education Week, which is very effective. And also the AAAS job bulletin, both of which are very effective, but are included in the price of your search. So there are no extras here. The search is the search, and it's done for the price that we, that we have quoted for you. Also, I brought your attention toward the end of the document, there's a warranty. And that warranty states very simply that if your search doesn't work out within a two-year period at the time of appointment, that we'll come in and do it over again, just for expenses. In other words, just for travel and those kinds of things that we would, we would have to do in order to, to do the search. But there would be no additional fee. So there's a two-year warranty from the date of the appointment of your new superintendent. With that, and with your permission, what I'd like to do is to invite Ken to come to the podium and introduce himself.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure for me to be with you tonight. I work as a consultant, executive search consultant for the New England School Development Council. I've been doing that, this is my seventh year now. I'm a retired superintendent of schools from Hollis Brookline, New Hampshire. I enjoyed doing that. I, I did that. I had that responsibility for 10 years. And during that timeframe, made lots of great professional connections and did the kinds of things that good school districts do. I enjoyed that work immensely, and I enjoy what I do now. I have a doctorate from Boston College. I was named the superintendent of the year from New Hampshire back in 2004. And when I worked in Massachusetts, I was named the school principal of the year, and that was in the late 80s. I've completed about 25 executive searches. I've done them all over New Hampshire, in Massachusetts, Rhode Island. And I've, I think I've been very, very successful. In every search that I've done, I've always been able to generate a very, very competitive pool. In spite of the fact that the pool is shallow, I still manage to find really fine, qualified people for very important positions. You have a very attractive school district, and I think that's really going to help you. Durham, Mayberry, Madbury, and Lee comprise the SAU, and I know that it's going to be a place that will attract quality candidates. I'm very, very confident of that. Let me help you to stay focused on what will be that we discuss tonight by giving you a, a copy of the, of the outline that I plan to review. Do you want to have that, please? If you decide to select us, then what we will do is I will arrange a meeting very shortly after the selection is made. And at that meeting, I will have prepared for you a suggested schedule that we could follow, an advertisement that can be used for our online work, and as Art indicated, there are a number of onlines that are included in the search price. One will be the Edweek Top Jobs section. Edweek, as you know, has the largest leadership in the United States of professional educators. They have an online component, and we will have an advertisement on that, as well as AAS, the Job Bulletin. Both of those will go in for 30 days, as well as the NASDAQ website. The NASDAQ has a very active website that is, that is eagerly sought by people looking for educational positions. So at least three websites will be available. I will share with you the suggested ad that could be placed on that website. Also, at that first meeting, I will have an announcement ready. This is a page and a half announcement that is included in the price that will be sent to about 750 individuals and organizations throughout the United States. So as Art indicated, this is a position that will involve national outreach. It's not just who are the local superintendents who might be interested. Not that there aren't quality superintendents in the region, but we would obviously like to see how other superintendents might compare in terms of what you're looking for and what you might need. So that meeting will do those three things. We'll have a suggested timeline for the search, an advertisement that we could use online, on print if you prefer it, as well as the announcement. What I would then suggest to you is that you take some time taking a look at these three documents, and then, once we have a conversation and agree on them, the schedule, the ad, and the announcement, then we will proceed from there. Going over those three things probably takes about a couple of weeks. So first meeting, I'll have them ready. You'll have time to go over them, and then we'll have a conversation and agreement. Yes, please.
What about putting together a search committee?
That will come, without question.
Okay.
If you continue on down, I'll get to that in just a moment.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. National and regional announcement of the vacancy. The, the announcements that I just described for you, the ad and the announcement, would be shared with a number of different organizations throughout New England and New York and the United States. So that the NASDAQ obviously will be included in that. The letter mailing will be sent to about 750 individuals and organizations. And then announcements and postings on various professional sites, various superintendent's organizations throughout the United States. For example, email, we will do an e-blast to all of our members all over New England, as well as the professional development organizations throughout the United States, and again, the NASDAQ website. So there will be tremendous numbers of opportunities for people to learn about the SAU superintendent's position. What usually happens is this. People will hear about the position as a result of the kinds of things I just described. They will contact the NASDAQ office. I will hear about that individual. I will immediately telephone that individual to further discuss, to further encourage if I feel the position could match up with what that potential candidate could bring. In addition to that, I make a number of telephone calls of, of seeking information from people who are aware of others who might be interested in looking at superintendent positions. So I call a number of superintendents. I call a number of organizers, of superintendent organizations throughout the New England area, and encourage folks to take a look at this position and encourage them to apply as we go through the process. The advertising campaign and C, as I indicated to you, the three various websites that we would actively become involved with. Recruiting candidates, as I indicated to you, I spend a lot of time recruiting. For any search, I-
I'm sorry, that's what the board members called.
That's quite all right. Any search, I normally make between 80 and 100 telephone calls, following up inquiries, following up recommendations, and pursuing individuals on my own. We will do a community-wide needs assessment. That's, again, as part of your package. There will be six, we're recommending six, needs assessment meetings where we meet with various constituent groups in a very focused conversation. And those constituent groups could include parents, PTOs, school administrators, your professional and support staff, and any other groups that you feel that we should meet with. I would spend time with you, helping you to organize those focus group opportunities. I would share with you materials that you could distribute to encourage participation. And I would lead the focus group. What we do with these focus groups is ask very specific questions concerning the particular characteristics of an individual that they're, that these groups are believing would be necessary to encourage to apply, as well as requesting the groups to identify issues, concerns, and questions that they have, that they believe the new superintendent should be responding to within the first six months on the position. Yes?
May I ask a question about the needs assessment? Would you, because certainly the board members, too, have ideas about, you know, the things that we would like.
Yes.
And would you do that more at the beginning phase?
I would, I would do a, a needs assessment with you.
Okay.
And we would spend time doing the same kinds of things that I would do with the other groups.
Okay.
So that we would have an opportunity to identify those issues that I just mentioned, the characteristics, and also those kinds of questions or those types of initiatives that you believe the superintendent should be investigating within the first six months on the position. So taking together your opinions, as well as the opinions of the other groups that I just mentioned. What I would then do would be to, first of all, I capture everything that everyone says. I then summarize what each group has to offer. And then I build a summary that encapsures, that encapsulates all that everyone offered throughout the six sessions. So why would we want to do focus groups? Well, very importantly, number one, it represents to the community and to the school district that you're very interested in engaging them, and it's an excellent opportunity to exercise outreach, number one. Number two, it offers constituents an opportunity to share their opinions about what they believe the characteristics should include and those initiatives should involve. So they become part of a profile, and the profile is expressed in the summary. That profile can be used by the screening committee, which Anne asked about and will get to in just a moment. And the profile can be used by the screening committee to create questions that they would like to ask the candidate when candidates are brought in for interviews. Additionally, that profile can be used for the entry plan that the superintendent will create, and it can be used as a basis for a conversation that you have, along with other things that you'd like to discuss, that would then help to focus on what it is that the superintendent will be doing as he or she enters the position. So there are four things that this profile that I create will be useful in facilitating the search. Additionally, we recommend that the report is placed on your website, so that anyone who's interested will have a chance to review it. And we also make 20 copies, hard copies of it available, so that people in the community will be able to review whatever, what the various constituent groups have indicated, those things they'd like to see in the superintendent, and compare how they, their own feelings might, might relate to what others have indicated. Yes?
So the four items in the profile, again, are?
The four purposes of the profile? Okay. One would be outreach. Secondly, would be to provide an opportunity to create a profile from the data that's gathered. Thirdly, it would be useful for the screening committee to have this report, so they can create questions that they would pose to the superintendent candidates. And the fourth piece would be to serve as one of the things that you would do in developing an entry plan for the new superintendent. So I see it as, as four very good possibilities, and they've been extremely useful in the searches that I've done. Extremely useful. Yes, please.
I like the idea of focus groups. I think that's great. But do you ever find it necessary, or would it be possible if the board is interested, to also do an online survey that community members who couldn't be involved in the focus groups could fill out, and could you compile that data? Is that something you've done?
We offer that as, as another piece of it.
Okay.
But the one thing that I like about the focus groups is the opportunity for the conversation.
Sure.
Back and forth, for the clarity on what the ideas are that are being expressed, for a sense of trying to develop some cohesiveness in what a group might be suggesting. But obviously, what you're indicating is another piece that we could do.
Okay, is that an additional cost?
I'm sorry?
Is that an additional cost? Or could that-
No, that could be included in, in the, in the process itself.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
I had a question about, just to be clear. So you would create some sort of an ad, advertisement, and include a basic job description, you know, it's sort of more of a boilerplate, or, I guess I'm trying to get a sense of, once you get all this information about our community and our values and what we seek in a leader, will you have to kind of tweak that, that ad, or you see that-
What I will do is I will bring to you a draft of an ad. Now, what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll access information that's available online, put together an advertisement draft.
Okay.
Share it with you, and ask you to edit it with me, so that what is created is comfortable for you.
Okay.
The announcement, the same thing. I will create a draft of an announcement. Then I will share it with you, sit down with you, invite you to edit it, add, delete, whatever you wish, and then we'll come up with something that we all believe represents what you'd like to include in that document.
Yeah, I follow. But that would occur prior to the, these six focus groups, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that timeline.
Yeah, that'll be the very first thing I do.
Yeah.
First meeting, I'll have a, a draft of an, of a timeline, an ad, and an announcement. Within two weeks, those three documents will be completed. That's usually how it goes. And then we're ready to do all the other steps.
Okay.
That will be identified here.
So, so really, the, the outputs that would be used during the screening process are primarily for that screening committee to ask questions, and that's, the focus group will really-
Focus group will generate a lot of good data.
Okay.
That data will lead to a document that the screening committee could use to help build questions. In addition, we will provide for them, and I guess I'll go ready to the screening committee now. Screening committee, we recommend to you, it should be made up of representatives from your community. We will have for the school board, recommendations about how that should be organized. Usually, there are between 13 and 17 members on a screening committee, the smaller. The larger they are, the more difficult they are to manage. Try to keep it a fairly manageable number. I've, I've worked with anywhere from nine to 11 to 13. One instance, I had 17 members. To be honest with you, the groups that are more in the vicinity of nine to 13 are better to manage. The screening committee should be made up of representatives from your community. And we have a conversation about what those representatives could include, and you should include parents, obviously. You could include business officials. You could include teachers, school administrators, obviously, school board members, students, senior citizens. We have a package of material that takes you through that and helps you to feel comfortable with what it is that you decide to do. So then we put together that screening committee.
Anne has a question.
Yes, please.
And this, this may tie in here, but Dr. Betancourt had mentioned earlier on that you worked on finding us a good fit.
Yes.
My question is, how do you determine what a good fit is? Is it based on prior demonstrated work of the candidate? Is it based on what they say? If you could share with us, and you may be sharing that, how we determine what a good fit is?
That's, that's a good question. A whole variety of ways. We have the profile, for example, that will identify what the constituent groups believe. We have the conversation with you, which indicates the kinds of things that you're interested in. We take a look at the experience base of the candidate, and what does he or she bring with his qualifications? How closely aligned are those experiences with what you need? We take a look at how receptive the individuals are to communicating well, what success they have with community outreach, how well do they coalesce, how well do they build constituent groups? Those kinds of things. We spend a lot of time taking a look at the candidate pool. We can't do confidential investigations until they become finalists, but we can certainly ferret out a lot of information because I know very much New Hampshire and Massachusetts, that's where all my experience is. We have a very wide number of people who work at NASDAQ, and so I could make a telephone call to someone from Connecticut, and I would get lots of information about candidates who are emerging. And we also spend a lot of time doing online, online search, getting online information about candidates. So I could find, for example, a candidate who might be interested in the position from, from Rhode Island, for example, and, and do, and do some web work and Google work, and get into newspapers, and get into the archives of newspapers, and get all kinds of information.
Do you have an average length of time when you've placed a candidate in a district that they stay?
Yes. We find that most of our candidates have entered the second, three-year contract, which is a little bit beyond what you find nationally.
Thank you.
Yes.
Back to the steering committee. You said you have something that will help us-
Yes.
-to form that?
Absolutely.
As a guide that we would follow?
Absolutely.
Best practices, that kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have, I have incredible amounts of information for you concerning steering committees, concerning focus groups, concerning the kinds of questions that we would, we would ask people about as we go through the process, schedules that we could follow when we bring people in, schedules that we could follow when we, when we do interviewing, questions that you could ask once we get to finalist candidates. So it's a very, very well-developed-
Will you assist the board as we form a steering committee, or do you, is that something we do on our own?
I would work with you on it.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely work with you on it, make certain that it's tailored to what you want. Absolutely work with you on it, make certain that it's tailored to what you want.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I've noticed that you use the terms "school board slash screening committee," "school board slash search committee."
Uh-huh.
And you also say that the focus groups would be determined by the school board. So at this point, it doesn't appear that the existence of a search committee, per se, is really pro forma, only because that's what you guys do.
We will work, I will work with you to help you create a search committee. We will spend plenty of time in advance of the school, of the screening committee getting together, to help you to identify who the participants should be, to help you process how we might identify participants, because there's a variety of ways you can do it, and to help you ultimately make the selections, because it's your choice.
It's our choice whether to have a search committee or to use you is one choice, and the other choice, I think, would be if we have a search committee, that you would assist us in getting the proper candidates. And lastly, whatever committee, if a committee is determined, its role then would be advisory, would it not?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Their role, by state law, is advisory. They're advisory to you. Usually what happens is the screening committee is organized through a process which I described. The screening committee spends a lot of time taking a look at all the applications. They spend a lot of time with me taking a look at what you would be looking for in terms of the kinds of behaviors and experiences that might match with your needs. They work with me in the selection of candidates for interview. I work with them in terms of identifying who, from those they've interviewed, should be moved to you, and you will identify what you want for a number, but usually, we interview about, we usually get, I can't give you a number on the number of candidates, twenty-five to thirty, thirty-five, maybe in that range. From that number, you'll interview probably ten to twelve, that's how it usually processes, and then from that, three to five will emerge and be forwarded to you. But I work with the process every step of the way.
Just one last question.
Sure. Good questions.
Thank you. You've also indicated that you would assume that a new superintendent would require a three-year contract. I don't want to elaborate, you know, get into too many details on this, but I can understand why we would want that, especially if someone's coming from out of state. But after that first three-year contract expires, would it be advisable, or do you think it advisable, to go on a one-year renewable basis?
That's all of the conversation.
Okay.
I think it's important that you do have a multi-year contract. You've identified one of the reasons why. What the contents of that contract includes is something that you'll need to discuss in negotiations with your superintendent-elect, but we would be available to share with you information that we have, documents that we have, various suggestions that you might want to consider as you process that. But obviously, I'll be working with you when we get to that point in time. Yes?
So just for clarity, the initial applications come, let's say there's thirty of them, they, all thirty of them, you review the thirty, and then do you pass all thirty to the screening committee?
Yes.
And then from that, the screening committee calls that down to...
A number.
A number, and then that number is interviewed by the board, or what's, could you...
Good questions.
...go through that process again, please?
Good questions.
Thank you.
We will have a number of applications. I can't tell you how many. Do know that it's a very competitive market, and the pool is shallow, which means I have to work very hard to get competitive people.
Thank you.
But I've been very successful. I have been very, very successful in every search I've ever done in getting a good quality grouping of people. So I'm confident that we can do that, for a whole variety of reasons, among which include the fact that you're a gorgeous school district, you're a very small school district, four lovely buildings, you have a stellar reputation, you're connected right next door with UNH, a lot of good reasons. Your geography is great. So we'll get a group of candidates, work with the screening committee to help reduce that through interviewing. Now, I will not predetermine who those candidates should be. I will have read all of the applications, and so I will have in my mind how these people might match up to your needs. I'll also do a lot of work that I've previously mentioned in terms of identifying as much as I can about them. Work with the screening committee to identify who it would be that they interview, and usually what happens is the ten to twelve emerge. Work with the screening committee to identify the very specific questions that we need to ask, that will ferret out information about their background, their capacity to problem solve, their ability to coalesce, those kinds of things. And then work with the screening committee to narrow that down to the three to five that they want to move to you. Then work with you for the same exact purpose, identifying questions, taking a look at backgrounds, helping you develop some insight into a schedule that you want to follow, and helping you process it through until the point it becomes where you're ready to name your next superintendent.
Thank you.
Administer all search details, make certain that everything is completely understood, make certain that it satisfies your needs, because this is your search, and maintain ongoing communication regularly with the chair, and respond to whatever questions or concerns that you might have, and then doing whatever it takes to help you secure the superintendent. One of the things that we do in our searches is we do get commitments from our candidates when they get to very specific, important plateaus. We get agreement, agreements from them, that they will be willing to accept the salary range, and we'll talk about that when we get to that point of the conversation, and also understand that there are some conversations that you need to have with a candidate about the contents of the contract. But I make certain that I know what it is that you want, and that the candidates are willing to accept those components, and they're not going to come back and say, "I'm sorry, I need X amount of dollars more," or "I need that country estate," or "I need that Lexus." You know, we're not looking for that kind of, that kind of depth by any of the candidates. So we do get agreements from them to acknowledge and agree with the contents and the parameters. And I mentioned the warranty, and we can also do some work afterwards, after the appointment. Of course, it's completely up to you. We do provide an initial workshop, an entry workshop, for the new superintendent that NSDEC provides all incoming superintendents, but we can do additional work beyond that, and that is all custom-made and tailored to whatever needs you might have.
Want to mention about the warranty?
Yes.
Would you mention about the warranty?
Okay, the warranty is a two-year warranty, that we believe that the candidates that will come forward will be candidates that you will find successful, and that the candidate will be continued after his or her first year into the second year. In some instances, candidates decide that they would like to do something else with their lives. That doesn't happen often, but if it does, we will warranty that we will provide you without charge, if it happens within the first two years, a search without charge, except for the ongoing expenses which are identified in your package.
Listen.
Yes.
You might have said this, and maybe I just missed it, I just want to check off the box, so. You will assist the school board in screening the applicants, verifying credentials, and assisting us in checking references?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay.
Yes. Every step of the way.
I figured that.
Every step.
I just wanted to check that box.
Even, I even have, I even have suggested questions...
Okay.
...that you might want to ask...
I'll give it a check.
...specific people who are having, who have particular roles in other school districts. So if you want to talk to the president of the Teachers Association, we have suggested questions that you might want to ask that person.
Yeah, questions, go ahead.
I just have, oh, sorry, two questions.
Sure.
One, what's your involvement with a public interview for the finalists? And two, how frequent is it that the first search is not successful?
Not frequently. Usually our searches are, I've done twenty-five of them. I've had one that wasn't successful, and that was because there was a delay in making an offer to the candidate, and the candidate chose another position. And I tried to work with the board to move forward on it, and there was a delay, and the candidate chose another position. So what we did was, we did the search again. I started that, I did the search again. We immediately went to search mode again. We started it in August, and we had a candidate in that particular position identified first of November.
Yes. Could you step up?
Please, go ahead.
I just wanted to respond to your question, in that a search isn't necessarily unsuccessful, it just isn't done.
Right.
So the idea is that as you're going through the process, if your first round of candidates doesn't get you the candidates that meet your criteria, then you continue on with it. So for our, the way we look at it, is the search is done when it's done, and when it's done, it's successful.
Sure.
So we succeed at all of them, because we do them from beginning to end.
You sound like you're very busy, and you're doing a lot of searches this year, so we'll...
No.
We're okay, though, if we...
Yes.
...started in October, perhaps, and...
If you appoint us, I will contact the chair. We'll set up a meeting, the meeting will take place within a couple of weeks after we receive the appointment, and I will have for you those things I identified, and we'll move forward on it.
I just...
Most of our searches take between three and a half and four months.
Good to understand your availability.
We're ready, and we're welcoming your involvement.
May I also just add something to that? A firm like ours actually has twelve consultants that work for us, and none of those consultants take on more than two searches concurrently. So you will always have the search consultant's undivided attention in terms of your needs. There may be other searches going on that the firm handles, but Ken, if he is the search consultant that you would like to work with you, would be dedicated to you, perhaps one other search, but he also has the option of refusing if he chooses to, if he feels that this one is more demanding than he wants to take on another one.
This is a very exciting opportunity for the right candidate. You have so many, so many good things, so much quality available. You've got a wonderful legacy and a great history. I would be very pleased to be able to do that, search, to conduct it, to organize it, to coordinate it with you. I really would.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Leon, you had a two-part question, and one of it was about...
The public interview process for finalists.
Public interview process for finalists. We recommend that you have a public interview. I work with the board to provide the support I can, so that the interviews are successful. Spend time taking a look at the questions that you want to ask. I have lists of questions that you can reference. You select your own questions, obviously. Spend time organizing the schedule, because it's going to be a busy time for your finalists. We recommend that the finalists come to your district and spend time with you, and I'll go over that in detail as to what it is they could do and how they could do it. And then they are interviewed that night, and then, following those interviews in public, have a conversation with you about what you would like to do for next steps, and we have choices of things that we could do that would go beyond the public interview. And we would discuss those possibilities, find out what's comfortable for you, what will provide you the most amount of feedback and data, so that you can then do the analysis necessary, and then, available with you, for you, to take a look at how you might want to do an offer of a contract, the language you'd like to offer them, what you would need to do to follow it up, the kinds of votes you need to take, and then the arrangement of follow-up conversations with the superintendent-elect. So it's very comprehensive and very detailed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it's my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
School Board Association. Ted.
Thank you very much. I thought I was here, I recall. I had to stand in a particular place because of cameras. Are there cameras on tonight?
Oh, they're working.
All right. Because sometimes I sort of freewheel, and then it's not going to work.
Oh, excuse me. Want to introduce the board to you.
Sure.
Hi, Ted.
How are you?
Good.
Hi.
Jan Lee.
Good to see you.
Anne Wright.
Henry Rock.
Lee on the rack.
Jocelyn O'Plane, nice to see you.
Megan Turnbull.
Good to see all of you. Good evening. My name is Ted Comstock, as I think all of you know, executive director of the School Boards Association, and it's my pleasure and honor to be here tonight to talk with you about the services that the School Boards Association provides in the area of superintendent searches. I know that you've just heard a presentation, I believe you've heard a presentation a couple of weeks ago, and I'm not going to talk a lot about process, because I suspect that you all know kind of what the process looks like now. I would surmise that, because usually, when we give presentations, we say, well, first there's the profile, the leadership profile, and then there's the screening, and then there's the selection process, and the checks, and so forth. So I'm not going to go into great detail about each one of those. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I'd really like to reserve a lot of time for your questions, but I want to talk a little bit about how we're different than the people you've talked to before, and I think maybe the people you're going to talk to after. First of all, as I said, the stages of a search are essentially the same, with some variation as far as what you want to do.
Can you pick up just a little bit?
Sure, sure.
No, that doesn't help.
Oh, it doesn't help, okay, all right. The stages of the process are essentially the same, regardless of who you choose to do this with you. But what's different is the who, and I think that's what all of you must be thinking about now, is who are we going to be comfortable with? Who do we think can do the best job for us? Who can help us find the candidate that will lead our school districts in the best possible way? And I think we're uniquely situated to do that, because, you know, our name, New Hampshire School Boards Association, sort of says it all to begin with. We are you. You know, we are New Hampshire School Boards, and that's what we do, that's all we do. We provide a variety of services. So why is that important? Well, it's important because we're here after the selection is made, and that's really critical, because some of the out-of-state places, they come in, they find somebody, they're more headhunters in nature, and then they're gone. But we're here, and we've been here for over fifty years, and we'll be out here, you know, probably for the next fifty years, if not longer. So I think that's important to you, to know that we're here, because we don't want to sell you something. I'm not here to sell you something tonight. I'm here to provide you a membership service, and that's what we're all about. And the other thing that's important and distinguishes us, I think, from anybody else is, because we live here with you in New Hampshire, we are very, very careful about the fit, because you will have many, I'm assuming, many qualified candidates. We generally are able to generate pools of, you know, eighteen to twenty qualified applicants, and that's pretty good these days. Wish I could tell you, you could generate fifty or sixty, but given the times, and given the shortage of qualified superintendents, fifteen to twenty is the typical number. But within that number, there are going to be some that are going to fit your circumstance very well, and there may be some that don't. And we really pride ourselves in working very hard with all of you to make sure that that fit is there. And there have been out-of-state candidates come in, brought in by other firms, that haven't been good fits. They just haven't been. And so, because we live here, we like to think that we sort of know what's going to fit, particularly with your help. So I think that's a big thing that distinguishes us. Let me talk a little bit about recruitment. And again, I think we're kind of uniquely placed about recruitment. Recruitment is one of the critical parts of the stage of finding a new superintendent, because that's the pool from which you will ultimately select your new superintendent. And the internet largely has leveled that playing field. You know, a lot of people, a lot of places talk about these networks of people they have and all of this. Well, the fact of the matter is that most of the recruiting is done online now. Most of it is. We use American Association of School Administrators website, we use every state School Boards Association website, we use virtually every Administrators Association website, we use Education Week from time to... We use American Association of School Administrators website, we use every state School Boards Association website, we use virtually every Administrators Association website, we use Education Week from time to time. We also have associations within New England that join together, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Maine, Vermont, to provide a network of qualified individuals for each one of those states from which to choose. So you being a member of the New Hampshire School Boards Association has the benefit of linking in to us, which links into the regional concept I've just talked about. So that's critical. Most of the superintendents now are coming from within New England. Not all, but most of the superintendents within our state are coming within New England. Even though we do national recruiting, and we do, sometimes we're accused unfairly of saying, well, you're in New Hampshire and you only do New Hampshire searches and you only do New Hampshire recruiting. Well, it's true that we only do New Hampshire searches. Unlike our competitors, we don't do searches in Massachusetts and Rhode Island and Connecticut and those other places because we feel like we want to focus on your needs. But we do recruitment nationwide. Every state School Boards Association, every state School Administrators Association, all of the principals associations will know about your opening here. We promote that, we make it available to them, and I actively recruit through my colleagues within those states so they will all know of the great opening that you have here in SAU five. So those are important things, I think, to think of it as you're sort of filtering things through as to, do you go with somebody out-of-state that does this work, but they do it either nationally for big places or they do it regionally, but they don't really do it exclusively for New Hampshire? We happen to think that's a real advantage and that's something that really separates us out. Now, another thing that I believe really separates us out in a positive way is we have a team concept in the way that we approach the searches. So I know you saw two people here from NSDEC, but we have five or six involved in a search. I as the search coordinator, we have a person on the ground with you that helps you through the process. My staff attorney helps with all the legalities involved because I think as all of you know there are a lot of legalities involved in a search. So we need to make sure that all those things go according to plan. So he's available. I have an administrative assistant that does much of the clerical work, copies and all the things that have to be done through the search process. And I'm joined by Barry Cox. He got the memo about the uniform tonight, pretty much. Barry is a human resources professional, working through the local government center, and he is a professional in doing background checks. And that's a very critical component of this business anymore because of people coming into the market that had not been in the market before, it's important that you know who you're getting and their background. So Barry performs that function as part of our team. And then on the other end, we have people that will help you with transition with a new superintendent and provide training in roles and responsibilities, evaluation, setting goals and things like that. So I didn't keep count, but that's at least five or six people. And we do not overload the people that we use to help you on the ground. We typically, they do one, maybe two. But we try to choose people to help you that are regionally based so they know your region. They're not out of Massachusetts, they're in New Hampshire and often within, you know, very few miles of where you are so they know the culture within the seacoast. So I just wanted to sort of start out my presentation by highlighting those things because you're at the point of, or will be at the point of, making a decision about who you use and there are real differences. And those differences, I think, make a difference in the final product. And last but not least, we do all of that at the most competitive rate that I know of. I haven't seen the rates that NSDEC charges recently, but historically, we've been the best value in the superintendent search business. Our fee is $8,000 professional fee, which includes all of the above I just described. And expenses will generally run $2,000 to $3,000. So we can tell you that our searches, including expenses, come in around $11,000. That's the total, not just our fee. That's the total expense. Now, the only things that would be on top of that would be if the board wishes to go and visit the finalist candidate's places of business now. And sometimes Hawaii comes up and people always want to go to Hawaii, particularly in November or December. And the expenses that the candidates incur when they come to visit you during the finalist time. So we believe that's a very competitive rate. We say not cheap, but it's competitive. And the reason we can do that, again, is because of membership service. We're not a business. We're a nonprofit association whose members are all New Hampshire school boards. So we provide a value added to our members as part of the superintendent search service. So it's not that you're getting less. We feel like you're getting more from us than you would from anybody else. And it is like, provided in the packets, I hope everybody has the packets. If not, I have a few extras. When you go through the packets, you'll see the comprehensive process that we use. And again, I'm not going to go through all of that, but I commend that to you because I think you'll see that it is as thorough, if not more thorough, than anyone else's that you have seen or will see. And you'll also see a sheet that looks like this. It's a compilation of the searches we've done most recently. And we pride ourselves and we're honored that most New Hampshire SAUs chose the School Boards Association. We're the prime player for searches in New Hampshire and I think it's because of all the things that I just mentioned. Last year, as you can see, we did Summersworth in your general neighborhood, we've done Dover, so we're certainly familiar with, you know, with this neck of the woods, as they say. So with that, I'm going to leave it and ask you if you have any questions. Because again, I don't want to belabor process points that you may have already heard. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, so the on-the-ground person who would be working closely with us would be Paul Domenico?
It would be Paul Domenico and we'll probably have Bob Lister also. Bob Lister, former superintendent in Portsmouth.
Okay. So they would be the...
He's the person that's the, what I call the regional person. He lives in Portsmouth.
Okay.
And so, and he actually was interim in Newmarket, I believe, the year before last. So again, we try to place somebody or have somebody help you that knows, not just the state, but knows the region as well.
May I ask a quick follow-up? When I, I just wanted to get, you know, another kind of, it's a process question, I suppose. Would you do any kind of community forums or conduct focus groups or anything like that?
Sure, sure. What we do is we custom tailor the search and I think there's a proposed timeline in our materials that would talk about things like that. But we would want to sit down with you as soon as possible to get started and to see what it was that you wanted to do. But certainly, we do focus groups. We believe that involving the community is critical because the superintendent not only works for the board, but also works for and with the community. So that's absolutely critical that all the stakeholders in the community are involved. So yes, we provide focus groups, we provide community forums, we think that's critical. Help with search committee. Some boards choose to use search committees, some don't. We think that search committees are a good way to go because again, it's community involvement brings more people into the process. So we're very active in working with a search committee on your behalf.
Thank you.
Could you share with me how you determine a good fit?
Yeah, that's the hardest thing to find. I mean, it's the hardest thing to describe, but I can tell you that, first of all, by the leadership profile that's talked about in the materials, we get a really good idea early on of what you and the community are looking for. And, you know, usually the first time I meet with an SAU board, I say, what do you want? And they say, we want the best superintendent we can get for 30% under-market rate. And I say that somewhere tongue-in-cheek, but that's kind of what the conversation is to begin with. But as we work with you and as we work with the search committee, we really get a clear picture of the characteristics, the qualifications that are, you know, are going to be right for you. So it's sort of like describing something that's hard to describe, but it's, it's an issue that sort of comes along in the process. So you have many candidates, hopefully, to start with. And as things winnow down and you see people, the candidates interact with the search committee, interact with you, you begin to sort of know. Now, there are some folks also that apply, that I know either within state or out-of-state that I know based on their experiences and based on what I learn about you, may not be the best fit. And it's not that I would screen them out because we don't screen out people. We have every completed application you will see. But we certainly provide advice and counsel on things that we think are good for you in a particular candidate. So I want to make sure I've answered the question. It's a hard question because it's hard to sort of sum it up in a couple of paragraphs, but it's one of those things, you sort of know it when you see it based on your experience and based on the process.
How long when a candidate is placed, is on average, do the candidates that you've placed stay?
At least one contract, usually a three-year contract and often more than that. There's been a lot of turnover in superintendents in the last four or five years because there have been a lot of retirements. There've been a lot of people that have been new in the superintendency and maybe they got into it and it wasn't what they thought it was going to be. We've had boards change throughout the state, so that sometimes is a factor. So there are a lot of things at play, but our track record, I think, is good and probably better than most because of that fit thing you and I were just talking about.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ted, is it true that when you go to advertise for the candidates, you advertise nationally, not just in the state of New Hampshire?
Absolutely.
Because I know Jeannie Richards, who is now in Raymond.
Right.
She was in Arizona.
Right.
And did you find her? Did she find you?
We did, we did.
Okay.
Well, it was a, it was a...
She was in New Hampshire previously before she went to Arizona and then...
That's correct. She was superintendent, as you may know, in Kearsarge Regional and then left to, I guess, enjoy the sun and the winter in Arizona. And I kept track of her. I've known her for a long time, kept track of her. And when an opening came up in Raymond, she was interested in that. We communicated, we did the search and so she, she came back. Paul Domenico is another perfect example of that. Paul Domenico was in Pembroke area superintendent, left to be headmaster at an overseas school. And then I recruited him back to come to Guilford and he was in Guilford for five or six years. So yes, to answer your question, and it's a great question, we do recruit both online and in publication nationally. Because sometimes it's a misnomer because they say, well, little old New Hampshire School Boards Association, they're not doing this national recruiting. But we are in a variety of different ways. Because you've got to do that, you've got to do that. The other thing we, if I might just add to that, the other thing that's a sensitive area, but we also are mindful of people both in-state and out-of-state that are looking to make a change. Now, they may not have notified their SAU board of that because they're just kind of quietly looking, but they will notify me and they'll say, well, gee, if there's ever an opening in Oyster River, you know, let me know. So we do a lot of that sort of, I don't know how you'd call that recruiting, but, you know, once we kind of know what your needs and wants and desires are, then we will pick up the phone and make your situation known to those folks that either they're expressed interest in moving or maybe we just think would be, to use the word, a good fit for you. And we don't raid them, you know, we don't raid other folks' superintendents, but we may, and nobody else should do that either. So we're not apologetic about, you know, not twisting somebody's arm to leave, you know, a place and go to a different place because what goes around, comes around, kind of thing. But we do make sure that every superintendent, assistant superintendent and principal in New Hampshire know about the opening here. And if I think there's somebody that's particularly good and would fit here, I may call that person, even though they haven't called me, and say, gee, did you know that? I think this would be a good place for you to be. So all that sort of thing winds up together.
I have two questions actually about involvement with community during this process and I'll ask them both and it might make this easier. So it's interesting, you have listed in the outline that the consultant conducts school community facilitation engaging in a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats.
Right.
I'd be curious to hear how that's used in developing the candidate profile. And then my second question is, would you be willing to do surveys if we decide that, you know, we don't have enough data or we want to include even more people, so we want to do some sort of electronic survey? Is that something you'd be open to doing?
Absolutely, to the latter, absolutely. And we've done those before and we could certainly help with that. The way the SWOT analysis works is that it is, at the end, a written report after, you know, all the groups have been contacted and talked with. And that report then comes back to you to look at. And then that becomes the profile. So as I say, it goes back to what I said a few minutes ago, that oftentimes, boards don't know exactly what it is that they're looking for. They sort of know globally what they're looking for, but the SWOT is an opportunity to really do an in-depth analysis of the kinds of things that you're facing and the kind of things that a candidate should have. Because the best predictor of a successful candidate is what? Past performance, right? That's the basic thing we look to, is past experience. And then we try to link that up with what your needs are now and in the next two to three years. I don't know if you have a strategic plan or not, a lot of places will have a strategic plan. Places will have needs for buildings or personnel or, you know, whatever it is. And so we try to link all those things up through the forums, through the analysis that you described, through surveys and so forth. So at the end of the day, when you make a hiring decision, then everybody is comfortable with the person that's been selected as the leader for the, for the communities.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, Megan.
I have kind of a follow-up to my previous question. I'm trying to get a sense about the, you mentioned you've got this great team of different capabilities that can help us in this process and I'm just wondering, who are the, would we really be seeing a lot of Paul Domenico and who are the, kind of the points of contact we would be working with?
Your primary point of contact would be Paul Domenico and Bob Lister.
Okay.
Those would be the gentlemen you'd be seeing most frequently.
Okay.
My, my part in the process is to do the recruiting, help with the recruiting that I've talked about and to do some of the vetting and to, you know, call my colleagues to other states to make them aware of the opportunity and to coordinate, you know, the activities here to make sure that everything goes well. But Paul and Bob would be the primary people you'd see. The staff attorney, you probably wouldn't see. Would be available for helping negotiate contracts, putting contracts together, making sure meetings were proper and all those kind of things.
May I follow up?
Sure.
We have quite a bit of information about Paul's credentials. Could you give us a little bit about Bob's background, so?
I could. Bob Lister is former superintendent in Portsmouth. In fact, I think he spent all of his professional career in Portsmouth, as I recall. I don't have a resume for him, I'm sorry, I could certainly provide you one.
Okay.
He now serves on the city council in Portsmouth.
In Portsmouth, okay.
Been very active in that community, was in Newmarket as an interim. But Bob is one that doesn't want to take, you know, more than one because he has, you know, those other things, but he would commit to, you know, to doing, to doing one. And the reason I'm excited to have him on board is because he is, he is nearby and he does know your area pretty well.
Thank you. Could you just give some details about your warranty?
The warranty is pretty simple and that is that if the candidate that you select with our assistant doesn't, you know, complete his or her first term, which is generally three years, then we would provide you search services to find another person without any cost except expenses, which are, as I say, usually the $2,000 or $3,000. But the reason I sort of smiled when I said that is we, I'm trying to think, I don't believe we've ever had to do that. We offer it. We offer it basically because, you know, our competitors offer it, but it hasn't been a problem for us because we haven't been faced with that circumstance. And I think that's because of the connections and because of the recruitment and because of the fit and all the things I talked about earlier. Sure, as I say that, it will happen, you know, next week, but it hasn't been the case.
I'm just looking at this sheet that you gave us and I noticed that, and I don't know the details of this, but I'm just curious, SAU 33 in Raymond, you conducted a search You conducted a search in 2006, 2007, and another one in 2007, 2008.
Yeah.
You also conducted one in Barrington in 2007, 2008, and they just replaced that particular superintendent.
Right.
And lastly, in SAU 11 in Dover, Gene Briggs Badger was already working in that district.
Right.
And how did that work out for you guys?
Well, let's start with Dover, that's the last one. Their superintendent, their then superintendent took a job in Tewksbury, Mass, sort of late in the spring, if you remember. And so, I contacted the board chair in Dover and said, gee, I read in the paper that this has happened, what, you know, what are you going to do? It was really, and the choice was, do we do an interim, or do we do an expedited search and try to find somebody? So, their decision was to do an expedited search. And so, we did that. And rather than the search lasting, you know, four to five months, which is typical, we processed it through quickly, and they did have the inside candidate, and they selected her. So, that was the story on that one. Raymond, Raymond was another situation where the board, it's a single district SAU, the board was very fond of a longtime high school principal, but he did not have his superintendent credentials. We advised the board that that was a potential problem. But they felt comfortable going ahead, selecting him, because he was popular in the community, popular with the kids, popular with the board, and they essentially gave him a year to do an alternative certification. And for whatever reason, he was not able to complete the alternative certification, so he resigned, and then we assisted them in finding another person. And you had, there was another one you had.
Barrington.
Barrington, again, another one where Mike Morgan, the superintendent, left for Exeter. He left fairly late in the game, and they did a search, and I'm trying to remember the detail of this one. I believe that, again, that was a late-season search, and Henry Alaberty was hired from Manchester, kind of late in the game. I don't recall, I'm just looking here. Yeah, that was only a, we did that search after Mike Morgan left, late in the spring, and Henry Alaberty, and then he left just recently to assume a superintendency in Maine. And then, we weren't involved in, you know, in what they did after that.
Thank you.
So, the average length of time for a search is four to five months?
You know, it is four to five. I say that sort of, in an equivocal way, there have been so many odd circumstances that have arisen, that I'm almost reluctant to say, you know, what it is. But, you're starting in what used to be the typical timeframe. The typical timeframe for a search to start would be in August, September, October timeframe. You'd do the search, and it would lead to a hiring, you know, January, February timeframe. So, you're in a sort of a typical timeframe. Now, the odd part about that is, because of the pool of candidates, if you don't find the right person, then sometimes it's necessary to sort of go out and do something again. But the good news is, and that wouldn't be good news, but the good news is, that if you have to do that, you're positioned time-wise, that you would have time to do it. Because let's just, you know, the dates there that we proposed to you, let's just say that by the time the candidate, the candidate pool came in, and the search, if you use a search committee, the search committee looked at it, if they didn't find anybody that they believed was the right fit, and then we had a discussion with you all about what that meant, then there would still be time to kind of go out there and search again. What happens when it's atypical is if the superintendent leaves in November or December, or February or March, then you've kind of got one quick shot at it. And if you don't, if you're not successful there, in a limited pool situation, then you're looking at a, probably an interim for the year. But you're in a good position, and I think you'll have, you'll be attractive to candidates as well.
Would you, could you explain if the school board decides to have a search committee, how you bring the search committee and the school board together on the decision process? Could you just review that?
Well, the first thing that is done after you make the decision that you want to use a search committee, you've got to decide sort of how many, which stakeholders you want to have be involved, and then give a charge to the search committee. I think that's very important, is to give a charge. There are directions, and they don't have to be really specific, but, you know, something about, here's what we're looking for, here's what we think will work, and we would like you to present us three candidates, four candidates, that meet these general qualifications. And typically, at that point, the search committee will then go about its work. It's not unusual for a board member or two to be on the search committee, that's the board's choice, but that's a direct connect then, and then the board members can report back to the full board about the process of the search committee. And then, after the search committee completes its work, then it will submit names to the full board of candidates that it believes are qualified for final process.
And in that process, do you normally recommend three candidates or three finalists, or two? What's the...
We normally suggest that the search committee, or if it's a subcommittee of the board doing the screening, that it be a minimum of three, if possible. Three, maybe as many as four, I've seen, sometimes five. But obviously, if it's only one, and the search committee puts forward one, then that puts you all in kind of an odd position. So, we suggest that one is probably not a good number. Two, I've seen that, but what happens with two, in the competitive environment that we are in, what if one withdraws because they accept a job somewhere else? So, then you're down to one again. So, the magic of three is that usually, even under the worst-case scenario, you would still have, you know, two or three, if the number is four that you submit. Odd things happen along the line here.
Have you assisted in the past with the formation of a search committee?
Yes, we have. We have.
What does that process look like?
Well, it's, the process is sitting with the board and saying, who is, what groups are important for you to reach out to? And then, you'll have, you know, a list, whatever that list is. And then, we would have sort of suggestions within those groups by title, you might say, because we wouldn't know the individuals, but by title, of the people that you may want to include. A lot of times, you know, people want to reach out to the municipal sides, so they'll have, you know, representative police or fire. Here, university, you know, I'm assuming that you'd want to reach out in a real way to the university, so you'd want to have someone from the university represented. You know, the teachers are usually represented. I'm going to forget somebody here, but you see what I'm saying, is that you want to, and some regular community members as well. So, you want to have as wide a viewpoint, I guess, as you possibly can.
Is there an appetite?
Probably somewhere around 15, 15, 16, I would say. Because by the time you kind of add up all the people you want to reach out to, it starts to number quite a few. We suggest that you not go more than 20, if possible. We think the ideal is probably, you know, 12 to 15. Because when you exceed that, it becomes a scheduling nightmare. The other thing I wanted to mention in recruitment, we just signed on with a highly-respected recruiting internet tool in Vermont called SchoolSpring. And, SchoolSpring? SchoolSpring?
Okay.
They are an online advertiser for education jobs around the country. They happen to be based in Vermont. But, they have 99,000 hits per night on their website for positions that they've listed. So, we have an arrangement, that's not the sole and only, but we talk about national. Well, that's a great national resource, and people now are accustomed to using SchoolSpring. It's used in many states. So, that's sort of an add-on, and that's part of our fee, that's not an extra fee. As is Mr. Cox's service, and I want to, if I could indulge you just for a moment or two, and have him describe what he does for us and for you. The, to me, the most important parts of the process are determining what it is, and the community would like to have in the next superintendent, that's sort of job one. Then, going through screening and narrowing it down, and ultimately finding the group of two or three or four people as finalists. And then, at that point, you want to be, make sure, as sure as you can, that all of those candidates are what they say they are. Because unfortunately, it's come to pass that not everybody is as honest as they might be about their backgrounds. It's just a fact of life. So, a couple of years ago, I talked to Barry, and I said, Barry, you're a skilled human resource person, and you know how to do these thorough background checks, we'd like to make that part of our service. So, we have, and he's worked with us in a couple of the searches. So, Barry, if you could, if I might have Barry describe what he does, because this is not something everybody does either. Sometimes the firms will say, well, you should do that yourself. Well, sometimes that works, and sometimes it doesn't, just because you folks, you know, are not professionals, and I don't think, maybe some of you are, but you're not professionals in the kind of things that you need to do to find out the background of people. Because if you only look at the people that are listed on the application, guess what you're going to find? You know, we all do that.
I'm one of those people on the team that you'll probably never see again, so this is my chance.
So, I wanted to give you a few minutes.
Thanks. The job that I do at the local government center, one of the things that I do is running what they call the professional recruitment service. So, most of my work is really typically involved in hiring, in recruiting and hiring town managers, town administrators, finance directors, police chiefs, fire chiefs for municipalities. But one part of the professional recruitment service that we provide to municipalities is the background check piece. And so, it's a small part of the process that Ted was describing, but we think is a very important last piece. And as you probably know, RSA 189 does require you to do a criminal background check. We also do county criminal background check in addition to that, and then we do a credit report, a social security number trace, employment verification, professional reference check, educational verification, a bunch of other things. And that's really a value-added service, I think, to the process that Ted was describing. And it's really critical, even to go above and beyond even what the RSA requires, because it's a demonstration that you've done your due diligence in vetting a person to whom you've made a conditional offer, and ensuring that they've met the standards that you require.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have questions?
It's been my pleasure to be here. If you have any questions, any follow-up questions, feel free to email me, and I'd be happy to provide Mr. Lister's resume. Should I send that to your chair or to superintendent?
I don't speak for either one.
Okay, okay.
One of the things that we're going to do, we're going to discuss tonight the presentations, but we're not going to make a decision until Wednesday night.
Okay.
And on Wednesday, we'll have a meeting that we'll specifically talk about.
Okay, all right. Good. But I look forward to hearing from you, and we're anxious to help however we can, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Is this a recess? You might want to, you might want to type the video. Is this a recess?
I think he went off to find the other people.
So, it is a recess.
It's going to take a little recess.
Okay.
Yep.
You have one? Let's step up, please. Stairs.
Yes.
I'd like to introduce the board to you.
Thank you.
Krista.
Chris.
Jan.
Anne Wright.
Henry Brackett.
Jocelyn O'Quinn.
Megan Turnbull, welcome.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to meet with you this evening, and to share with you a little bit about the perspective on the search process from SARESC, about perhaps our acquaintance with New Hampshire, and in some respects, our passion and commitment to sustaining, if not advancing, leadership in New Hampshire schools and school districts. I'll begin by perhaps giving you a little bit of overview of SARESC. It is an educational agency that's a little distance from here, but nonetheless has significance here, as well as the rest of our state. I'll then go to talk a little bit about the attributes of what we believe needs to be a very thoughtful, comprehensive and far-reaching selection process, or interview and selection process. And then, hopefully, give ample time to have a dialogue with you, answer questions that you may have, and perhaps insights that we may have, aside from the search process, about the school improvement process, and how an integrated collective approach to that is quintessential to our organization's beliefs about working with schools and school districts in the overall community improvement process surrounding learning. So, that's really kind of the spectrum. I do have some additional reading for you. I know you fed quite a lot in this, part of this process, but here's an overview of at least the executive search consultants, a little bio on each one of them, are involved in the process. And then, here's some talking notes that will kind of follow what I believe is pretty critical to our discussions this evening, in addition to the information that you have before you. SARESC is a organization that has been in our state for about 25 years. It's a collaborative educational organization that has a broad scope of reach in our state. It started out with the significance around what are the ways that opportunities can be provided for students with learning challenges and difficulties. And it transformed from that into development in several other areas. We have a very comprehensive area surrounding clinical services related to students with exceptional needs. We also have a very thriving and continuing to advance program development piece, of which this could be considered part of. That is a significant impact, we hope, we believe, in our state around program improvement, school and district improvement plans. And we also have contracts with the state for the majority of approval programs around public and private schools, particularly as this is related to the schools that are in most need of improvement in our state. We have, in our organizations, over 125 consultants that work within our reach, ranging from areas of a search process, perhaps, to district improvement process, to real specific special education needs, as well as in looking at some programs that are centered around student well-being and development. Our reach is primarily in New Hampshire, although it's extended to have some influence in New England. And we have several of our programs that are being, I should say, turned into reality in schools as far away as Alaska and Nova Scotia. Why are we interested in being here this evening and talking with you about the search process? We have just recently taken on an initiative to participate in executive search process. I have, prior to becoming acting director of SARESC, had a small agency that did executive searches in New Hampshire. Perhaps quiet, perhaps under the radar, because part of the essential aspect of what we're doing and believe we're doing well in the executive search business is that we really want to be deliberate and focus on supporting one district at a time. We don't do multiple searches, and particularly with the executive search process of the magnitude that you're talking about. We... want to be deliberate and focus on supporting one district at a time. We don't do multiple searches, and particularly with the executive search process of the magnitude that you're talking about. We want to see a process through from beginning to end. We believe, as is stated in kind of the overview of this, that this is the most, a most significant, and perhaps the most significant process your communities will go through, hopefully in the foreseeable future, as you look for an educational leader that will not only present a learning plan, so to speak, for your schools, but will, will develop within your communities a following and understanding of the significance of the educational agenda in the schools. We also believe that the process needs to be very carefully crafted and developed, and not to follow any particular template that is used universally in the search process. But rather, this is your search process. We believe we have a responsibility to glean from you and the people that you represent to include, community members, to include all the way down to students, what they believe are the critical elements of leadership in your district, and how that affects them individually and collectively. Without that clear profile, that frankly is about 60% of the process, we don't believe that you will turn every rock that needs to be turned, so to speak, to really get a clear descriptor of what are the qualifications and characteristics of the individual that you want to represent, you as the educational leader in your communities. We believe that that is developed by having a clear delineation of responsibilities, a clear understanding of the responsibilities of your future superintendent, as well as clear responsibilities of the board, of your community members that support you, of the faculty, staff, and administration of your schools, as well as perhaps in some respects for the representation of the, of the student body, which I understand is a part of your school board as well. We have, I believe that it is sometimes through the voice of students that we get the clearest understanding of what leadership is about, and would encourage that that be a very strong part of the process. We also believe that your stakeholders need to understand what you believe to be the essential attributes of your educational leader. We would take first, ask for, we would first ask for a series of discussions with the board. We would give you a survey. We would follow what is kind of called the Delphi Process in that survey piece, where we would take your input on these surveys that surround about 14 questions on what you believe to be the primary challenges, opportunities, strengths, characteristics, the ambitions that you have for not only the foreseeable future, but what you have for five to 10 years out, and a number of other questions that are, that are, are meant to really bring your opinions forward. We would take that, we would compile that, we would go one round with that and show you where you collectively are. We would try to come, we would state that here's some difference in opinion on this particular area. How can that then, on the second round of the survey? Do you understand what other people are saying? Can you bring this to a sense where people can have consensus around, clear consensus around the direction that you would like to see for leadership in the district, as well as how this matches what you may have already as any strategic goal-setting processes or direction for the district? That's critical to be, any be initiated with the board. The similar survey then is given to other stakeholders, whether that be your administrative team, whether that be your faculty and staff, to some extent to your student body, certainly to your community members, and would lead into a similar number of, of discussion points or, as the terminology in organization talks about focus groups, it would be, in this case, a fairly elaborate process, because you have a fairly broad range of representation from your business community to your, to your community leaders, to parents, to the three separate communities that you represent. That would take some time. A similar process has gone through that, that, that will evolve, as with the board, is that there will be kind of a consensus drawn through this process of here's where students believe this to be, teachers, administrators, will try to get the core areas there that are represented in those areas, and then that is, that is, is then compared or looked at in relationship to what the board feels are critical. You have that information before you. That then will develop into another series of discussions, perhaps not too many, because hopefully at that time, there's some real trends and consensus there on really developing a clear sense of what your expectations are for this position, for this educational leader, to bring forward a profile of leadership that will sustain you for some time. That, once that is developed, then that will be, that will coincide with what we believe to be a fairly energetic marketing process that will, you will have the choice of where that goes, because that will depend in some ways upon the expense for marketing. But if, for example, you wanted to do a strong national level search, we would give you options for that area, as well as in New Hampshire and New England. Our observations have been that the strength of the marketing piece, if directed upon New England and through the media, perhaps gives us the most, most immediate results, and that at the national level, there are often inquiries and some responses to which there has to be very careful review of qualifications that come forward. Why is that? Because we really rely on knowing people and seeking out people who we believe can fit the profile that you have described, and through other similar agencies to ours to be able to see and to be able to acknowledge what impact they've had in the districts or in schools that they have been in. That is very critical to the process. I think we know what that, how carefully that needs to be done. During this process, we will develop a strategy for communication that will be, that will be collectively developed, that will be adhered to, that will involve the elemental, the elements of communication between the board and our search consultants, or me in particular, as well as communication to all of the stakeholders, and regular updates to the local press and media on the status of the search process, the attributes that are critical to that, and the opportunities for public input. The input from the public will be at the public's convenience, not necessarily at our convenience. For example, in other search that we've done, Saturday morning, coffee at a local bagel place or someplace like that gives you as much information as in other nightly meetings, which is often difficult for busy families. The business community usually a luncheon or two to get community leaders and business people on around the table has been successful, and has helped with that process. A critical part of the process at about this time, that the advertisement has been done, that the, the results of the advertisements and the candidate's inquiries is coming to closure, and applications are beginning to come in. We would work with you clearly to develop a selection committee that would help you in the process. We see that as a primer before candidates go before the board. We believe that selection committee should be composed of representation of the stakeholders that we've talked about to this point, that they should be the, they should independently be acquainted with all the material we've dealt, we've developed to this part, to this part in the process, that they should compose their own questions as it relates to their role as a stakeholder, that this, it takes a two- or three-hour process to have that initial meeting. They understand their role is advisory in nature, and then they go about the process of interviewing what would be, I suspect, a semi-final list of between five and seven candidates. That would be the hopeful outcome of that. We would, as noted in the, the information that you have, we would be very deliberate in how we go through the applications, how we make reference checks on the people, and will have a very clear, articulate record of all of our involvement in this process. As this, all of the semifinalists, if you want to call them that, that come forward, we would have them then participate in what is called the DISC survey. And that's a survey that will be conducted by Mr. Lyle Kirkman of the Future Management Systems, who has participated in any number of executive searches, both in business and in schools. He has a presence in New Hampshire that you might not, or I might not know about, but they include primarily businesses and organizations such as the BIA in the state and other top-level executive positions. The DISC survey is an instrument, very thorough instrument, that gets a very clear descriptor of the individual leader's style, what would be their strengths, what would be areas that they would perhaps have the greatest impact on communities and schools. And then that would be, as you can see, filtered into the whole process relating to what you believe are the strengths, the stakeholders believe are the strengths and priorities for the search process, so that there can be some scientific equation, if so to speak, on the match of the candidate to your aspirations, or your collective aspirations. Has that been successful? Mr., Mr. Kirkman would tell you that it has been critical to the success of high-profile educational leaders. That's an interesting term. You would probably want to ask, what is a low-profile educational leader? I, I really don't know that, but certainly that leadership profile is a critical part of that. The process then goes through what would be a process that you select, as far as you're going through the reference checking to acknowledge and support our reference checking. So, we would give you that information. You may have a subcommittee of the board that looks at that deeply, but we would encourage by the time that candidates come through the selection committee, whether that be two or three candidates, that we work together for you to do, validate the reference checking that we did as individuals or as a committee of the board, to substantiate the stature of the people that you have before you. And then, boards, I believe, are most successful at that point, that they take ownership in the process, and the subcommittee of the board, if you wish, that really works on that, is the one that introduces the candidate to the rest of the board, assures the board about what you know about that candidate, what your, what their process have been. You take ownership in that process. We help you guide that process at that point. Then let's say that that works to a successful end, that you find a candidate you find is best for you and the community and all the stakeholders that you represent, then you will define a process of perhaps looking at having your finalists be a part of your communities and of your school system for a day or whatever you may choose to have that best represents that. We will help you through that process and suggest to you how that can be best introduced to, to all the stakeholders, from students to parents to community members, but you describe what you would like to see. The community needs to see, we believe, at that point, that you have, you have, you have seen the process to the point that you believe that it's sound, that you know for sure that it's credible, and you can best communicate that to your community and stakeholders, rather than myself or other people in our organization. That goes through the natural process. Hopefully, you have a difficult time making a decision on the preferred candidate, and then the entry plan that is spoken to here is, we believe, a critical aspect of the search process. We don't believe that once the search process is completed that we leave, and thank you for the opportunity to serve you. We will be, we hope to be involved with an entry plan and very careful guidance to the individual as to, as well as to the board in the first months of a person's introduction to the district, to make sure that the elements of the plan are well-thought, that the, the primary goals or ambitions for the first few months of their inter, their being in the process are, are well orchestrated, and that our process has in fact resulted in a very favorable position for you and all of the people that you represent.
Question.
I think I've talked a little bit too much. I hope I gave you a little acquaintance with that. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question. Your warranty.
I'm sorry?
What type of warranty do you offer?
Warranty?
Yes.
Well, I, I can only tell you this. You won't see us bring any candidate for you that we don't feel will meet your opportunities first and your challenges second. We just won't do that. We'll say, "We're sorry, we haven't been able to find the candidate that is the best match for you." There's just, you know, I don't have to tell you how, how difficult it may be to find the right leader that meets your expectations. We have, we are not in a crisis, but we have to work a little bit harder to find the right educational leaders to come to school districts, not because we're in New Hampshire, but because most sterling leaders in school districts are well taken care of, because people know the rarity of, of talent and the abundance. the rarity of talent and the abundance of opportunity for educational leaders. So this is no small endeavor to find the right person. You will have a lot of interest, and interest does not necessarily equate with being successful for your, for your district. So we will guarantee you that we'll bring you people that we believe will work and will do our best to make sure that that is followed through on. And frankly, we would, at that point in time, we'd be acquainting you with other opportunities that may, we may suggest be brought forward, such as a more extensive coaching opportunity with an experienced, perhaps retired, New Hampshire superintendent who knows, who knows the roadmap of New Hampshire. We have done that in at least two cases, and it has proved to be invaluable.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please elaborate on the screening process, the steps of the screening process, the first, initial group of responses you get and how that is produced?
We'll have the criteria that's, yes, I will.
Thank you.
First is to be really clear and developmental on this criteria that represents the community, the community's view, including your view, which by then will be integrated. We will take the applicants that we have, we will look at the qualifications, we will look at them against this matrix, this rubric that we may have of this. We will probably look for experience that is not comparable, but is in line with what the opportunities here are. In other words, it would be hard to imagine that we would want to bring a person forward that hasn't had central office experience, who understands policy, who understands clearly the, the attribute of a collective view on, on developing, on expanding upon a mission, vision, goals and process. So we would look at that. We'd make some initial observations on that. We probably quickly would come down to a field of candidates that we then would take your attributes, and on the next page, we'd do the reference checking. We'd both do both informal and formal reference checking. And then we would probably bring that down further, and then we would probably, if we don't know the candidate, we would be having a great deal of discussions with them first on the phone, and then we would meet with them personally, one-on-one, before we would bring them forward to you at all. We would be well-served if you could have four to five semifinalists. That would be the best of all worlds.
Yes, ma'am.
Question. Just to be clear, in terms of the, you know, the, the regular point of contact, would it be you or be one of these other associates serving as the primary?
Oh, I would be doing that.
Okay.
The other associate, Deb Osgood, is a person who represents a community, a business aspect. You can see that she's very instrumental in entrepreneurship in our state, if not nationally. Why is that? Because I don't think we know it all in terms of people who have come up through education. I think we need to have someone who's been in the, in the business world, someone who can relate to business people, to get their real view of the candidates and the process as important as I think I can, I think I can go through a process to tell you pretty clearly what students are saying that they want for an educational leader, as well as your faculty and administration.
Thank you.
Yes, Krista.
You had mentioned a little bit about the Advisory Search Committee. Is that something that you recommend a composition of, or is that something that comes about through the surveying process? How does that search committee start?
It comes about with discussions with you. You make that decisions, I make the recommendation to you.
Okay. And what, normally, what does that look like? Like, how big would the community be? Who would be represented on it?
It usually looks about 12 people. You have one aspect that's students, which is interesting. You usually, you work with students with a larger group, and then you let them work on their own, and then you obviously have representation from your teaching staff, from your support staff, from your administrative staff, from your central office, from the community, probably from your business community, as well as from general community members, as well as parents. You'd have representation with that. We try to build redundancy in, so it doesn't always work, but it would be nice to have two people in each one of those areas, particularly when you're talking about parents in business and community, because people have busy lives, and if they can't make a particular one, then there's also, there's still the parent perspective there. You bring them, they, they, after the process, which is usually about, which would be, I estimate, two full days, and then after that, they would, there's a whole process of going through on confidentiality, understanding what their role is, and then they give some thought to that. We come back together and go through this process of building on characteristics of the candidates. They are part of the process, they define that. That comes down to clear, it's a process that clearly brings forward the, the people who they, in their representative areas, believe best serve their interests.
Thank you. Could you share with us a little bit more about the DISC survey?
Sure.
Characteristics of it, other places it's been used, maybe?
Yeah. Well, you probably have heard of the Myers-Briggs, right? Most of us have taken the Myers-Briggs probably a couple of times. That's a standard survey on what your personality profile is. It deals with the profile on your personality, Myers-Briggs, and a little bit about how that applies to your, your profile as a leader. The DISC focuses clearly on leadership. It has four distinct areas, and the first being drive, implementation, social dimensions, and I can't remember what C is, collect, collaboration, okay? And then it has a series of very interesting, if not crafty, questions that have finite elements of it that have been researched base. And there's a whole profile of research on how these different D over I, I over S, how they relate to a scope of those areas and how that relate to leadership. As a matter of fact, we've even had one done on the, about 80 New Hampshire leaders who have participated in the Leadership Institute that Mark Joyce and I have done for the last 11 years through the Superintendents Association. And so we have shown that where New Hampshire leaders are actually, have a stronger profile than are in a lot of our adjoining states. That's an incidental comment. So, so we know a lot about the individual as to just what, what they are. And if it's, for example, that they're strong on drive and implementation, we could say that here's a person who will be very forthright in, in following your mission, their real skill is how you implement an idea. So you would be working around how you create the ideas in a mutual fashion, understanding that if you cultivate and you synthesize the idea so it's clearly understood, you can really know that there'll be a strategic process to how you implement it.
Could you share with us, perhaps, what your expectations for longevity would be with a place candidate?
My expectations? Well, if I were coy, I would say, we wouldn't want to be doing this process in another year, okay? But, you know, you, you've got to look, hopefully, the process turns out, so you have someone here who is five years. The, that's against the national profile. The average longevity for superintendents in the country is less than three years. It's over three years in New Hampshire, but one-third of the superintendents revolved in Massachusetts last year, about a quarter of them in New Hampshire last, last year. If you consider the fact that a third of the superintendents in Massachusetts is over 65 people, you can understand the anxiety that people have about the field of candidates that we have available. And so that's why this is, this, this is an effort that takes a lot of energy to pull out those leaders, particularly when the ones that are committed to their districts are in that three to five-year range of time, and, and it's, so they make some personal choices and professional choices, frankly. It's, it's going to be different. I mean, to say anything different than that would not be truthful with you.
Yes, sir.
I noticed your member school districts are, you've listed them here, and that would lead me to assume that these are the districts for whom you've worked in terms of research?
Yeah. Well, that's a good question. Those are the districts that created SURESP. They're the ones, they're the districts that got together to originally create SURESP 25 years ago. And there are Board of Directors, they're very supportive of us going into a statewide search process. They believe that it's consistent with our mission, that we have a responsibility to try to advance the leadership profile in the state.
Any other questions?
Can I, are we about to ask a question?
Yes, I see. I just think this is for the board's interview. This is really just for the board tonight. I appreciate it.
I guess I wasn't, I still don't understand the warranty thing. If, let's say we were unable to find somebody, we just, and we had to redo the search all over, that would be okay with you? That would be fully paid for and?
Yeah, we may make an arrangement on mileage, so, on ancillary costs, you know, materials and mileage, but we would not, we would not know.
And if we hired a superintendent and then that superintendent left within their contract term, would you do a search again?
Well, I think we would, I mean, we would sit down and talk about that. There could be any number of variables that represent why that happens. We would rather be preventive than have to be in that kind of a situation and convince you that this, that beyond the search process, having this advocate or this coach there to help them out so that, that we avoid a situation like that. You know, too many of our districts in our state have gone through four superintendents in six years. That's not good for kids. That's not good for kids. So if there are issues with how you see the world, it's better to have someone there to help you work through those issues rather than be in a circumstance where you have to go through a process again, and frankly, the...
Well, I agree, but we can't keep somebody from leaving.
No. But you can really be careful about the introduction in the, of there, because you don't want to be in a position where, where you're seen as a district that has revolving doors for leaders. We have to avoid that by being really attentive to the process, getting the very best candidate, and then ensure that there are a lot of opportunities and safeguards built into it.
Yes, ma'am.
I've attempted to be consistent in asking the same questions.
I'm sorry?
I've attempted to be consistent in asking the same questions, and a question I've asked the other presentations this evening is how do you define a good fit, which I think you've already answered how we do that. One thing that's not clear to me is the advertising process, and who writes the advertisement?
We, we write the brochure, we write the flyer. A flyer goes out to every superintendent, school district in Maine, New Hampshire, Obama, Massachusetts, and Connecticut. And then the brochure, we write that, but we share that with you. You, we might suggest in our first meeting that we have a subcommittee of the board that serves in this process, so that you edit it, you see it, it goes out under your signature as much as it goes out under ours.
Any questions? Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
What we're gonna be doing, we're gonna make a decision Wednesday night. We're gonna discuss four presentations tonight a little bit, and then we're gonna have a discussion and a vote on Wednesday night.
Okay.
Before you leave, I'm sorry. If we were to have some follow-up questions for you, would, could we get in touch with them and within the next day or two?
Yes, of course.
Okay, excellent.
Of course. I think you would go through your superintendent on that, and I know his number, so when he calls, I'll, I'll...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go ahead. If I could, we, I just provided kind of a worksheet, just a rough draft. Feel free to maneuver that the way you wish, but Wednesday night will be your opportunity to bring forward the names of the firms that, or the firm that you feel best serves the school system and could best conduct a search for a superintendent. It's somewhat critical, I guess, that you be prepared to make some decision, although we don't want to rush it. You have some time to reflect now for quite some time, the pamphlets, the information, and do feel free to call the references that they have listed if you feel that you have that need. They're all reputable organizations, but do feel free to call, many of them provide references for you, do that. And so it would be, if you look at the timeline, it would be an opportune time to have a firm selected at the beginning of October to commence the work that needs to occur. And I don't know if there's, if there's the need tonight to deliberate much, but I'll leave it up to the chair, but the process we talked about was for you to, to think about what you've, you've had and come back on Wednesday to really bring forth the firm and why. I think it's important for the public to hear why you, you feel this firm would represent school system best in this process. You probably haven't had much chance to think about that now, so it would probably be best if you wait till Wednesday and come back and say, here's why I feel this is the firm and that would present, can, can really, look at the scope of service. I think the, the arguments are right there, are the rationale for you.
Yes.
Leon, we heard from one firm at our last meeting, we heard from three firms this evening. Can you share with us how these firms came to us?
Okay. I spoke, both the chair and the vice chair, about how to do this, and I invited a national firm, a regional firm, and kind of two local firms, New Hampshire. To give you a perspective of the variety of services that are offered across the country and in this region, and also the price range that vary considerably. And I think you can see commonalities and some differences, but in any situation like this, it's, it's the best fit, too. I mean, you've heard those conversations, it's the best fit for you, and knowing your community, who do you feel provide... Who do you feel provides the services to reach out to our community, has the capacity to move this process along at a fair pace, but, and also can do all those checks and balances that you need. So I think those are some of the things that you need to weigh.
Thank you.
I just want to add that I found that Suresk, I saw that they had done the Lebanon search, not last year, but the year before, and I think our timing was crossed, and I didn't get the information from them right away, and Lee had already done the three, and then they got back to me and said they would be happy to present. And then I saw the name and it rang a bell that Todd Selig had recommended this man, I don't know, a couple months before, saying he's a very capable individual. He didn't recommend him for the superintendent search, but I think for something else. So I gave him a call to just see if he offered anything different from any of the other ones, and I thought, no, what does it hurt to give another half an hour? How that one got on there.
Any further discussion tonight about the candidates?
So, we're not going to give any kind of input right now, what we think?
We could.
Just sort of digest it more, you think that's?
I think that Lee's recommendation is, think about it.
Okay.
Develop some questions, and we can discuss it on Wednesday night.
Yeah, and I think it's important, Wednesday night, you come with your rationale why you selected, why you prefer a firm, and what they believe they have to offer, and right now, it's kind of rushing it for you.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to be clear, so if I feel that there's one or two firms that, one firm that maybe stands out clearly to me, I'm just going to focus on that. I'm not going to give explanations on why I didn't like the others for some reason. Okay?
Focus on the strengths of the firm that you wish.
Okay. All right, that sounds good.
Okay, everybody understand that? It's pretty concise, what we should be doing. Okay, then there's no further business at the board tonight, and I'll call for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Excuse me?
You go ahead.
We've had a second on the motion. Do you want to have the discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of adjournment?
No.
All those opposed? Adjournment?
Oh, do we need to vote on it? I'm sorry.
Well, I don't think so. Okay. We're adjourned.